The City Council Meeting for November 21st. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll, please.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Clistic.
Belzak.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum. Normally, we have a question, comment, and announcement section, but we have three appointments to make tonight, and since I think a number of you might want to speak tonight, I don't want our appointees to have to wait until everybody's talked. So I'm going to move to the Mayor's Report. We'll get the appointments done, and then we'll go back to number five. Item A: Consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Taft to the Economic Development Committee. Do I have a motion? Moved by Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Appointment's been approved. Bob, you want to come forward?
Are you going to do the two of them together?
Yeah, I could do them together. Hold on, Bob. We'll make it easy for everybody. Well, we have an individual gone, but I'll ask for the motion to approve the appointment of Christopher Green to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Moved by Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
Christopher is not here tonight. He'll be with us for our first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Item C: Consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Jonathan Christ to the Economic Development Committee. Motion to approve. Alderman Gustafson, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Motion's been approved. Now, Robert and Jonathan, who want to come forward, please, to get sworn in? All the way up to your front.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Christ.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Economic Development Committee according to the best of my ability. Okay, and I have a card for each of you to please sign.
It makes you official.
Yes, underneath, I'm sorry, because he, yes, please. We didn't instruct the mayor appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to number five, questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. We put this in our agenda a number of years ago because sometimes residents like to come to a meeting and they don't want to wait. They don't have anything on the agenda, but they have something they'd like to say. So that's why we put this here. I must tell you, though, that this is a three-minute only, and there's no political statements made during that three minutes. This is something that should be informative, something that you want to share. So do we have someone from the audience who would like to come forward and like to address the council? And just state your name. You might want to raise that microphone a little bit.
Yes, rather so. I was also asked to start the video, but it's not currently running.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Lazic, and I'm a resident of Ward Six. After the failure of the referendum of '66, our school board developed a community engagement forum. The forum was open to any resident in the school district, and I jumped at the opportunity to join. You see, I wanted to come to a meeting to understand other points of view, get my own questions and concerns answered, and move together forward as a community. Looking around the room at the volunteers of all ages and all sides of the referendum, engaging in conversations, it was astounding. But one thing struck me. I couldn't help that notice one of the referendum's loudest "no" supporters was missing, Alderman Gustafson. In a May 20th, 2022 Darien Patch article, Alderman Gustafson was interviewed about his position on the referendum and was quoted about saying about the school district's board, "They didn't do anything for five or six years. Shame on them for letting it get so bad for so long." The question that I'm stuck with on this is, if he was concerned about the referendum, why not take a seat at the community engagement forum? Why, if he had concerns about the school board's management of funds, why would he not look to open conversations about spending? Why, when Alderman Gustafson has been seated in his position for the last four years, did he not understand what issues his Ward School District was facing? His inconsistent, or his consistent inability to meet with others to discuss issues and lead the way to resolution through compromise doesn't make him an effective town leader. I reached out to Alderman Gustafson via an email to voice my concerns about his very public opposition of the '66 referendum. After detailing my concerns, his response was simple. "This isn't a city issue. Contact me when you have a city issue to discuss." So I stand here tonight with my city issue. My alderman has spread false information on tax rate increases. My alderman continues to reference a consolidation bill that does not, or is not, the solution for our immediate school district's needs. My alderman has no interest in hearing the concerns of constituents that do not align with his own. My alderman refuses to be the voice for all Ward Six residents, specifically those with young families. My alderman is too concerned with his own agenda. The divide that was felt during the '66 referendum continues to rumble through our city's neighborhoods. Coming together as a community where all residents' voices are heard is the only way to move forward. I question my alderman's ability to unite the community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Tedeschi. Although I'm not a Darien resident, I am a teacher with the Center Cast District 66. I've been a music teacher and director of bands in the district for the past 32 years. As an employee of the district, I have served families that reside in Downers Grove, Woodridge, and Darien, specifically Ward Six. I am here tonight to express my disappointment in the Darien leadership for their lack of support for the Center Cast referendum and complete disregard for the residents that are and will be affected by its outcome. The referendum would provide much-needed funding to improve the aging failure, failing infrastructure in the school district, along with upgraded curriculum needs and much-needed support staff. As a proponent and primary leader of the "No Vote" campaign, Alderman Gustafson actively worked to defeat this measure. He encouraged and influenced his constituents in his district to vote "no," and the only solution recommended was consolidation. As a teacher, his desire to defeat this measure would have a direct impact on my ability and others to serve the families in the community. Failure to pass the referendum would lead to cutting services for students, student experiences like art, band, music, STEM, and countless clubs, and sports. The band program in particular has taken part in several events in Darien throughout my tenure. Mr. Gustafson also expressed his desire for this to fail and go into control of the state. This would certainly have a negative impact on anyone considering moving their family to, and business, to this community. This does not sound like what a public official who cares about all of their constituents in their ward should be doing. Mr. Gustafson also chose not to engage in productive conversations with school officials, nor did he volunteer to serve on the community engagement forum, of which I serve, and to help build a better relationship with the community and district. I would hope that Darien could do better when it comes to supporting the families and children that depend on a healthy local school district. I would also like to express my disappointment with the lack of conversation from Mayor Marquez. Mr. Mayor, I had the pleasure of having you speak at the Center Cast Community Band, performances on two occasions. You were more than willing to greet the public. However, when asked to provide a statement of support for District 66 and to attend some events on school property, you declined. In fact, you were silent throughout both the June and November elections. Your promotional video for the City of Darien touts a great community to live and in great schools such as District 66. If you truly believe this, then I would expect that you would take a greater interest in the success of the school district to help attract future residents and families to Darien. I am proud to be an employee of District 66. I continue to look forward to serving the families, students, and residents of Darien. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to address the group? Okay. We move on to our approval of minutes in the City Council on November 7th, 2022. Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Any comments or questions? If none, the roll.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Absent.
We have five ayes, one abstain, and one absent. Okay.
The minutes have been approved. Receiving the communications. Anyone have communications for the council? Alderman Gustafson.
Yeah, I've got some great news. Fry of the Coop has got a soft opening starting tomorrow through Saturday from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So I encourage everyone to get over there. They've had some difficulty in hiring people. He's now getting, able to get staffed up enough to be able to handle the 5 to 9:00. So it starts tomorrow through Saturday. I had a tour of the facility. Great facility. He's doing some work and getting some photos up from the Historical Society. It's really a very nice-looking establishment, so I encourage everybody to get over there and support the Fry of the Coop.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If he has a soft opening, is he asking for everybody at this point?
Yeah, I talked to him today, and he wanted me to make the announcement to encourage people to go over there. So, yeah, so he's going gangbusters, so we'll see how it goes. So it'll be a good test for his team.
Anyone else? Okay. Under the Mayor's Report, I have a statement I want to read. I'm very much aware of the issues that this referendum has caused or raised. Personally, I chose not to become involved because I felt it was better that the taxpayers of District 66 make that decision. As Mr. Tedeschi said, I've been invited year after year to be a judge for the History Fair with Jake Little. I attended the principal's retirement last year when we held it over at the Music Company, and I heard Mr. Tedeschi and the band play that day. I've been, I had Jake Little and the Lakeview Principal join me for our 9/11 program last year when we did our 20th anniversary. So that's my involvement, and I enjoy that kind of involvement, and I show my support for the school through those kinds of activities. But now I'd like to read a statement. I said, "Of late, we have seen an exchange of words on social media that have only served to divide our residents. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to share some of my observations and to remind all of us that we cannot let differences destroy relationships and prevent us from working through critical issues. First of all, we need to appreciate the different groups within our city and understand that diversity is a hallmark of our community. We benefit from the contributions made by residents of all ages, and we do ourselves a disservice when we label a group with a negative connotation. There have been references to specific groups, notably our senior population, as contributing to a stagnation in our city's growth, and some of this has been fed by our own Alderman Clistic." I think when an Alderman talks about getting young families to Darien, but neglects to state how important the senior population is to a community, it only fuels the type of comments I'm seeing in the patch. I think all seniors that volunteer in groups like the Lions and Women's Club, the Rotary and our churches, and the wonderful benefits that each of these groups bring to Darien. We do a disservice to our community when we discount the contributions made by seniors and we acknowledge the many fine contributions they make to our Darien community. I also believe it is critical that we seek ways to acknowledge the differences that exist between groups and how we can benefit from truly listening and learning from one another. Continuing the present dialogue will result in continually to travel down a path which is causing unnecessary dissension and divisiveness between neighbors. We need to remember, as Helen Keller said, "Alone we can do so little; together we can do so much." Ask yourself a question. What makes a great community? It is not just the responsibility of the city government, or the Park District, or the schools, to enhance our Darien community. It is the hard work and dedication of those who are serving our community through volunteer groups. Ask yourself another question. When was the last time you attended a pancake breakfast, a Halloween party, or July 4th parade by the Lions, or a clothing drive or arts program by the Women's Club? Did you know that Darien has a Darien Arts Council and a Darien Garden Club? Or that our Darien Rotary has a backpack program that sends local children home on Fridays with nourishing food to get them through the weekend? How about our Darien Youth Club with its program for our children? Or the Cancer Smokers, a group of young people whose goal is to rid the world of cancer? These groups and others are all run by individuals, seniors included, who give up their time in the service of others. Their work enriches our lives, and by their work and their actions dictate the quality of life in our community. Back in January of this year, we had the realization that one of the greatest ways to improve our community was bringing together many social, civic, service groups that serve our community with the goal of answering the question, "How can we further enrich the lives of our Darien community?" Back on February 12th, a group of civic-minded individuals representing over 20 different community organizations, including our schools, met for the second time to answer that question. We titled this group the Darien Community Action Team, a group of civic-minded individuals who answered our call to join together to assess our community's strengths, to find ways to create new programs, and bring forth new ideas to better serve our community. As a facilitator of this group, I came away energized by our discussions, and I appreciate the civic engagement that takes place each time we meet. We planned and implemented a dynamic community calendar that is now available to the city and all community groups. We heard from two Hinsdale South students regarding a plan to initiate a farmer's market in Darien, and we are now engaged in discussions involving expanding the city's concert series next summer, including an Oktoberfest in late summer, and possibly holding a Darien Community Arts Festival. Next month, residents will be able to attend an extended Darien tree lighting ceremony that will include a Kris Kindle Market and carol sung by members of the Darien Fine Arts Council and the Eisenhower Junior High Choir. These are but a few of the wonderful things that could be offered to Darien residents when groups come together in an effort to meet the needs of all of our Darien residents. As a group, the Darien Community Action Team is committed to promoting one goal, one Darien, as we organize, nurture, and empower our residents in order to make Darien the best place to live. And my add-on to what I've previously written here and stated is that we do need to work together. All the groups need to work together. And I'm not saying anybody in this room is not willing to do that. If you have a group that is looking for solutions and you invite us to attend, we'll be part of that. Okay? Well, I have received emails blaming the city for the failure of the referendum, and I have received emails from people saying, "Why are you supporting the referendum?" So we've been criticized on both sides. That's why we take a neutral position. We take a neutral position because it is the responsibility of the taxpayers. Now, are we concerned about the livelihood of the children of District 66? We're concerned about them. We're concerned about '63. We're concerned about '61. And we participate in all those. I was asked this earlier this year to sit on a strategic planning committee for District 61. I engaged with board members and parents for their strategic plan. If I had been asked to sit on the strategic planning committee for District 66, I would have been part of that. I've been asked to participate in events at District 63 as well as District 61, and I can go back over the years. I was part of the Cast 2000 Committee that put the addition on that building. When I'm asked, I participate. I was an educator. I care about children. I have three sons who grew up in this community, and almost everyone at this table here has had children who've grown up in this community. There's no one in this city, on this administration, on this dais, who doesn't think it's critical that we have the best education for our children. Yeah, I would ask the question. It seems like a lot of attention has been thrown at Darien. Why didn't Darien, the city, come out and support this? Can I ask a question? Did you ask Bob Barnyard in Downers Grove, or did you ask Gina Cunningham in Woodridge, and did they come out and endorse your referendum? They didn't. Okay. Because I think it's critical, because your school district serves all those communities. I'm sorry.
There was one comment, though, that, from the band teacher, that was a little bit different, and it wasn't about working against it. It was about the mayor not coming out to support it. So I think that's where those comments is, just, again, illustrating the consistency among at least our local communities and what the mayors have done for these referendums during the referendums. That's what I had heard, Mayor.
You know, I was, this really doesn't have much to do with District 66 or the other referendum. I'm president of DuPage Mayors and Managers, which is a conference that represents 1 million people in DuPage County. We have 34, 35 municipalities in DuPage, and as president this year, we're a very nonpartisan organization. I was asked to endorse this candidate, and I had to say no. I was asked to endorse this candidate, and I had to say no, because if I would have endorsed them, the conference would have been, looked like it was partisan. It was favoring. I simply adopted the attitude this election cycle that I wasn't going to endorse referendums and/or candidates. And I'll be quite honest. I don't think, I don't think that the City of Darien and how you view it had an impact on this referendum. I really don't. Why don't you come forward so we can, you can talk by the microphone, because I can't hear it from the back.
And her name.
And you're, just state your name, please.
Mary Testa, and I live in Ward Six. I have lived in Ward Six since 1987. I am a senior. So not all seniors fail to support this referendum.
I know that.
And I have no problem with someone, as a personal citizen, as a private citizen, rather, deciding not to vote for it, and even maybe explaining how consolidation would work in a dispassionate way. The problem I have is when you have someone who is an elected official using their position as a bully pulpit to advance a position against the school district. It's not the neutrality that you're talking about. You may not have endorsed anything. I understand that. But there's somebody on your council who worked against a sizable portion of his constituency, and that constituency is in part represented by many of the people here, and you need to know that we are not happy about that.
I understand that.
I'd like to respond to that, if I could, because, and you can go back and you can look at all of the videos of the council meetings. In all the meetings, all I have ever said in the council meeting is that I've only encouraged people to be educated and to vote. I have not taken any position. Go back and read each one. Now, as, please, it's my turn. As a private citizen, I have the right to express my opinion. Now, my opinion has always been for the actual consolidation of, not of schools, but of districts. And I'm, right now, I am working with Representative Rita Mayfield from Waukegan, a Democratic representative, and I'm also now working with a Republican senator in order to get a bill passed. It's called the Classroom's First Act. Classrooms first. Okay? And that's what it's focused on, is getting more money to the schools. If you look at the state of Illinois.
This is not a state issue.
Listen, it's my turn.
This is a local issue.
It's my turn. The state of Illinois has 2,400 students per school district. Okay? Florida, Florida, has 40,000. Now, why do you think, why do you think that people, why do you think that the tax rates are so high in Illinois? Why do you think people are leaving to Florida? Okay, I am pushing very hard, very hard, and this is something that's going to impact all of the state of Illinois, which is a great thing.
We asked you several times, as citizens of Ward Six, my husband and myself, how much would each individual household stand to save? General ballpark figure.
It's very, very difficult to calculate that.
You spitballed this solution.
Very difficult.
You never explained on social media where you were very vitriolic.
Read the House Bill. Have you read the House Bill? Okay.
Yes, I actually have read the House Bill.
The whole House Bill, okay.
And that is not why I'm here. That is a state issue. We're talking about a local issue where you, as a private citizen, used your position on the council to work against your constituency.
Okay.
You were not neutral, which is what the mayor was claiming.
I was neutral as an alderman, thank you.
You weren't neutral on social media.
Mary?
This is what it was.
Back about 12 years ago, there was a desire of two school districts, 61 and 63. 66 was invited, as well as 62, which is Gower. Were invited to participate in a school consolidation study.
Yes, and I know how that works.
I was part of that. Alderman Potarowski was part of that. Alderman Sullivan's husband, Mark, was part of that. We spent a We spent a year.
Yeah.
On that. We had people from the state come in. We, it was a very complicated process.
It is.
And to be able to give an answer about how much people would save was difficult. And.
But that's how it was put forth on social media. That would have been a perfect time to lay out why Mr. Gustafson thought consolidation would help. He could have talked about the process. He could have, I mean, if you're claiming to voters that they should vote against this because consolidation will save them money, are you not obliged to at least give some indication? We knew what the district was asking of us in terms of increased taxes. This was a vague, cobbled-together proposal that really is more about a state agenda, a problem that someone has with state politics. Our referendum is a local issue. There was no indication how long students would have to wait for relief while we waited for consolidation to be considered. That information, we were owed.
The state, the state was in much better shape in 2010 for consolidation than they are now.
Right.
Back then in 2010, we reached the point at the end of that study, which took place a year, where we made a presentation to both boards of education. We showed them the cost savings that would take place. And there was going to have to be a new tax rate. And it was going to have to be a higher tax rate.
Right. And that was the point that many people also made.
And the state, and the state was going to have to come in and provide money to equalize salaries between the one school and the other school. And one board said, let's go with it. The other board said, let's not go. So it died. But all I'm trying to say is, that whole topic came up. I spent a year working on that with, with other people, and it is very complicated. So to give you an answer and say, how much would I be saving? If you asked me today, Mayor Marquez, how much would I save? I couldn't tell you that.
And that's why my question was kind of rhetorical. I knew there wasn't really an answer. It was just a solution that, you know, was, it was masquerading as a solution. But to attack the superintendent, to attack the board, to attack people who were in favor of this, as was done, that was not the, the responsible actions of someone who has chosen to be an elected official. It may not have been stated in these board minutes, but it was stated all over the place. Many articles in the patch and, and all sorts of comments on social media. And we asked that the temperature be taken down. We asked that personal attacks not be engaged in. That is not what we got from a particular individual on this council.
The reason I made my statement tonight, the reason I made my statement tonight is I, I want to see, I want to see this calm down.
Yes.
I want, I want to see, you know what? We, we only get things achieved for the betterment of our children and our community when we come together. And that, and you know that. And this whole group knows that.
The outside world does not distinguish between District 66 and 61 and 63. This becomes all of our problem because the outside world says, Darien, man, they're having problems over there supporting their schools. Why don't we look at Willowbrook? Why don't we look at Woodridge? There are parts of Downers Grove that are still pretty affordable. And that affects, affects my tax rate. Or, I'm sorry, that affects my property value. That's why we're here.
By the way, I'm writing a response to your email. You'll get it tomorrow. Anyone else? I want to thank all of you for coming. This is probably the biggest crowd we've had in this room in a long time. It's the biggest crowd we've had, I think, since we discussed people raising chickens in their backyard.
That's right.
So I thank you. I wish you well. And I want you to know something. Here at the city, we take it, this is a very serious issue to us. Because how people get along impacts how the city succeeds. And so let's, let's hope that we can work together in order to achieve that. I, I, I hope and pray that that happens. I really do. And that's why I read my statement. And the reason I mentioned seniors is there have been, there have been things out there that seniors defeated this and seniors didn't. You know, I'm a senior citizen. Senior citizens vote for referendums. Senior citizens also vote against referendums. School, parents of school-aged children vote against referendums too. You know, so let's not lay it all on the seniors, and that's what I was saying. Seniors have not created any stagnation in this community. Seniors have made major contributions, as have every group, every demographic in this city. I want to thank all of you. We're going to continue with our meeting now unless one of you has one more thing to say. Okay. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our city's clerks report. Joanne?
One announcement this evening. City offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 24th and 25th, in observance of Thanksgiving.
Thank you. So the administrators report?
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Department head information and questions, police department chief?
No report tonight.
Mr. Conback?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Let me take a moment regarding a purchase that we're looking at. This is an emergency purchase. Last Wednesday, we had a truck fire over at Public Works Garage. Unfortunately, the truck was totaled. This is truck 102. It's a, the truck that we looked at unfortunately could not be salvaged. It is totaled. With that said, we had an opportunity to review opportunities for a replacement truck. A replacement truck was found at Willowbrook Ford. Currently, that truck is being on hold till tomorrow noon. The truck purchase itself is approximately $82,000, excuse me, $82,672 exactly. With that said, unless there's any objection, we would like to have the opportunity to purchase that truck and come back at the future city council meeting for a formal agenda along with the dump body package. This truck only is the cab and chassis with an existing dump body on there. So again, we're looking at coming back on December 19th for the formal approval of the actual truck as well as the dump, dump body snowplow package. This is a truck that is used for cul-de-sacs for the snow plowing season as well as de-icing. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Dan, because this is a newer truck, could you have one of the devices that puts the juice down attached to this truck?
Not on this one. We won't do that, no. We have a couple, several other trucks that fit the bill, if you want to say, for the application of the various de-icing, anti-icing methodologies.
Okay. Any other, anybody have a question for Dan? Tom?
Are we going to have an exact number on the plow package? Because right now you just have an estimate by the 19th?
Correct. Yes, we will. Currently, it's estimated at $50,000. We'll be more exact, yes.
And we'll have this, we'll have this truck this week?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that takes us to our treasuries, treasurer's report. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. And this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 222314 and the amount of $1,115,128.82 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended November 17th and the amount of $277,446.22 for a total to be approved of $1,292,575.4.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
One comment, Mayor. I have a client that is on this warrant tonight for services that he gave to the city of Darien. I will be abstaining for my vote tonight.
Thank you. No questions or comments? We have the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Abstain.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Five ayes, one abstention, and one absent.
The warrant's been approved. The monthly report, Mike?
Revenue and expenditure report for the six months ended October 31st, 2022 reflect general fund year-to-date revenue of $11,162,591, expenses of $7,234,811, current balance of $6,826,715. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $4,037,593, expenses of $3,111,313, current balance of $4,373,150. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $702,950, expenses of $332,848, current balance of $1,308,138. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $21,655, expenses of $1,389,747, current balance of $2,388,615. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $1,757,990, expenses of $3,210,540, current balance of $14,220,880.
Mike, do you want to mention anything about the six-month report that you did?
I did a summary of the, for the council at our work session and just indicated that there's really nothing terribly out of line. Some revenue items a little higher, some a little lower, but everything pretty much intact. Expenses seem to be running in line. No big surprises there aside from things you might expect like some utilities and gas and that. But otherwise, rather non-eventful for the first six months.
Thanks, Mike. That takes us to our standing committee reports. Then the Aldermen have reports for the council. Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next municipal services committee meeting, the schedule will take place next Monday, the 28th of November at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
The next economic development committee meeting has been rescheduled for Thursday, December 8th at 7:00 PM in council chambers. And there will not be a December admin finance meeting. It would have been on Monday, December 5th, since there's no agenda items. And the workshops and budget calendar is starting to get pulled together by Mr. Vanna and Mayor Marquez. So that will be released shortly in terms of when budget review process will start in February.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our police committee meeting was canceled this evening due to lack of agenda items. Our next scheduled one is going to be for Monday, December 21st, 2022 at 6:30 PM, I'm sorry, across the parking lot in the police training room.
Thank you. It takes us to questions and comments related to our agenda. Does anybody have a question or comment related to our agenda? If none, it takes us to old business. There being none, takes us to consent agenda. We do not have a consent agenda, therefore takes us to new business. Item A. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance levying taxes for general and special corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May, 2022 and ending on the 30th day of April, 2023 for the city of Darien, Illinois. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments or anything you want to say, Mr. Vanna?
Just as the city has done for a number of years, excuse me. The last year's extension from the county, that, that dollar amount is all that the city is asking for for next year. It's a, it's a few dollars more, about $30,000 more. But as you get down to item, item C will be that abatement for that $30,000. So the total tax for residents to pay next year will be exactly what we receive from the county without any increase. Some, the county does tack on a 1%, I believe it's 1% to most people be, due, due to uncollected taxes. But in terms of our levy, we're only asking for what we received last year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? In the roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Item's been approved. Item B. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the, for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2022 and ending on the 30th day of April, 2023 in and for the city of Darien Special Service Area Number One, known as Terra Hill. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah.
The Terra Hill area is subject to a special real estate tax known as a special service area. The total levy's $5,000 among all the owners there. And that money goes to maintaining the wetlands and the storm detention basins over there. So again, that, when that subdivision was built, the intention was that those residents are paying for those stormwater facilities, and that's what this does.
Any further questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Item B's been approved. Takes us to item C. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance number 0-40-15. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. You want to explain this one briefly, too?
Yes, we typically, or the city council typically receives abatement ordinances usually in March for our two water bonds. But in the case this year, as we talked about during the tax levy discussions, this is coming forward earlier. This ensures that the tax levy will match last year's extension. So we, this could be done until March, but again, to just to make sure that that was the opinion of the council, not to raise the levy. I want to do that now. Put it on now.
Any further questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Item's been approved. Item D. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for the city of Darien, DuPage County, Illinois, known as our Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. For the audience, we developed a comprehensive plan for the entire city of Darien back in the early 2000s. In 2006, we amended that. We made changes to that comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan has what's called key development areas. And in 2006, we had a number of key development areas. And I'll give you a, for instance, what is now known as Darien Point, where Lady Jane's haircut and Nothing Buncake is at, that was a key development area. It was the old Heritage Plaza, had gas stations on each corner. That was a key development area, and that area has been developed. So as with that area, a lot of the areas that we had in that comprehensive plan have been redeveloped. But there are currently nine areas, or key areas within the city that we still want to redevelop or look at redeveloping. And so we had, we have to amend the comprehensive plan in order to do that. And our two committees, our Economic Development Committee and our Planning and Zoning Committee and our Municipal Services Committee have all discussed this probably since, what, May till now? And so we're approving this tonight, just to give you a little background on what that takes. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
No, I just did one thing, Brian. I mean, it's, so we, we've now revised for the Chestnut Court area to be multi-use. So I think we've made that.
Or mixed use, not multi-use.
Mixed use, right.
A mixed use.
Yep, yep. So we now have that. So that, and Dan, we haven't, I don't think we've heard anything back if in developer on that presentation that we made to them, right?
Chestnut Court, there's been no additional feedback at this point.
I mean, okay, so we haven't heard a word?
No.
Okay.
And I, I think the council has talked about this before. The comprehensive plan is really the first step. It, it takes a while to do that. Next step is actual zoning ordinance revisions.
Yep.
So I think Jordan will probably start that, Dan, fairly soon.
That is correct, yes.
Good. Anything else? If nothing else, then the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Item has been approved. It takes us to number 18 on our agenda. Questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. And again, do any of the audience, any of the audience have a comment they'd like to make?
I have a question. Regarding that.
Tim, could you just go up so you're on the mic and the meetings are shown live so everybody at home can hear you also?
But I know you're talking about the zoning by the Nothing Buncake area.
Could you just state your name?
Patricia Yurczak.
Okay.
Why don't you turn the fountain off on Plainfield and? That's just my question.
Why don't we turn it off?
Like, it's frozen. Why don't you turn it off?
I'm being cynical, but at the same time, that was the way it was designed. It was designed to have 360, to have a waterfall feature 365 days a year. And again, you know, there's both sides to it. It's, it's, you know, some people like it, others say, why? You know, so it's, it's an attraction. It's an attraction because it creates different types of scenes, if you want to say, with the ice sculptures. So again, some love it.
Yeah.
And so why you're presenting something as a possible resolution, and when we were in such dire straits, made it even more difficult and irresponsible and challenging to deal with as a, as a family that was going to be directly impacted by that. So, you know, I just think that the council should be aware of how their colleague is out representing this body, and he's representing and stating that that's his role. And as far as the consolidation bill, House Bill 7 has been dead since April. So I'm not sure what he's talking about, because that's, that's currently not a, a possible or a viable legislative move. Perhaps it will be, you know, come back up, but as of right now, that is not even a possible...
You know, you know when it'll come up? It'll only come up.
Sure.
If, let's say, 66 and 62 and 61 and 63 said, let's look seriously at consolidation. Then it'll come up.
Well, and there's ways to do that without House Bill 7.
Right.
And House Bill 7 is nonexistent right now.
It should.
And so he can't come up here and say he's relying on House Bill 7 when it does not exist.
Haven't been someone who's had to go announce state to deal with the state legislature?
I'm not suggesting I want to do that.
No, no. I would, I would, I would prefer it not come from the state. I would prefer it would come from the residents who live in the area, because then it'll be successful if it comes from the residents.
Well, I can't speak for the other residents, but I'm certainly not in favor of consolidation. I don't think it makes sense, based on my own research and the research that Mr. Gustafson has provided himself.
I don't think it's going to happen, so I wouldn't worry about it.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, voter approval is really unlikely, especially with, with our group. We're kind of, we're kind of tough.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Last call. Nobody else? Anybody from the council have anything they would like to add?
I just want to fry the coop this week, starting tomorrow, so please be, please be there.
Folks, good luck. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. [inaudible]. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Last call. Nobody else? Anybody from the council have anything they would like to add?
I just want to fry the coop this week, starting tomorrow, so please be, please be there.
Folks, good luck. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. [inaudible].[1585.32]